Wagging for some reason.
Welcome, everyone, to the regular Half Moon Bay City Council meeting of April 19th, 2022. This meeting will be held entirely by teleconference. All council members and staff will only participate via the Zoom platform. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to recent amendments to the teleconference rules required by the Ralph Brown Act allowing teleconferencing during a proclaimed state of emergency when local officials have recommended social distancing, that is AB 361. The purpose of that bill is to provide the safest environment for the public, elected officials and staff while allowing for continued operation of the government and public participation during the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar and live Spanish interpretation will be available within the Zoom platform. Members of the public are welcome to log into the webinar as attendees. During any public comment portions, attendees may use the raise your hand feature and will be called upon and unmuted when it is their turn to speak. You can also join the meeting by phone at 669-900-9128 using webinar ID 955-3561-4263. If joining by phone, use star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself. I'd like to call this meeting to order, but I have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Here.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Rabeck?
Here.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Here.
Mayor Reddick?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. So our next item is public forum. This is a chance for members of the public to comment on items that are not on the regular agenda. But Jessica, do we have any hands raised at this time?
Not yet. Do you want to have Victor Nicholas do the?
Oh, yes. Victor Hernandez will go over procedures for Spanish interpretation. Thank you, Victor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, honorable councilmembers, Mr. Nisbet, Ms. Enberg, city staff, and all members of the public, Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreters. Buenas noches, señora alcaldesa, honorables miembros del Consilio, señor Nisbet, señorita Enberg, y todo personal de la ciudad, y los miembros del público, Victor Hernandez, todo el español. Les queremos dejar saber que esta noche vamos a tener esta reunión interpretada al español para poder acceder el canal de audio. Usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es el botón de interpretación, que será un icono de un globo o un mundo en su barra de tareas al fondo de su pantalla de esta plataforma de Zoom. Después aparecerá un menú y entonces usted podrá seleccionar su idioma. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. And so Victor Hernandez and Nicholas Laskovich will be providing Spanish interpretation services for this evening. There are the members of the public who have general public comments or comments on the consent calendar items, please raise your hand.
I'm not seeing any hands, Mayor. And you're muted.
We will move on to proclamations and presentations. We have three items this evening, starting with the Midcoast Community Council update, and I believe we have Claire Tontons.
Yes, Claire, go ahead.
Good evening. A couple of things. One is that we're looking forward to having the county's portion of the multimodal trail on the east side of the highway. Work beginning soon in the next couple of months and completion by the fall. And we're also looking forward to work beginning probably next month on the pump track in Quarry Park, which will also be completed probably this summer. So those are good things. And of course, Harvey has mentioned about the bridge previously on the coastal trail that will presumably be worked on soon. We had an interesting meeting last time about the airport. As some of you may know, there are 12,000 people who live in the flight path of the Half Moon Bay Airport, and there are ongoing issues between the community and the airport. People complaining about noise, about the fact that there is no unleaded fuel available at the airport, other associated things. There's been a lot of consternation for quite some time, which has gotten worse because most of the problem that people complain about is the touch-and-go exercises that the pilots do in order to maintain their certification, where they have to come into land and not stop but keep going and then take off immediately. And they circle around and do that a number of times, which creates a lot of noise and consternation among people who are underneath the flight path as they do this over and over. The problem has been linked partially to flight schools that do not operate out of Half Moon Bay. They come from other places over the hill and from the South Bay. So we had a presentation which was jointly put on by the Half Moon Bay Airport Administration and the group of concerned citizens who have been complaining about the airport noise, which I thought was wonderful that the two of them collaborated together to do this. And it looks as though there are avenues of improving the situation. Everybody is much clearer about what needs to be done and how it can be done. So I think we made a really good start on much better understanding and a better condition for those of us who live near the airport. So that was really good. We're going to be turning a lot of our attention in the next month to highway issues because there are a number of things coming up from Caltrans and from other places, I guess, including Half Moon Bay, that we want to look at and see what we think about and see how they will affect us and what we can do about them. And some of them will probably be really helpful and some of them probably won't be, but that's where we're going to be looking over the next month. We do have a candidate's forum, which will be totally virtual, which is coming up the 4th of May, and it's going to be focused on the entire coast side from Pacifica to Pescadero. So we want Half Moon Bay people to tune in. I did, I dropped by the City Hall yesterday to leave off flyers and found out you can't get into the City Hall. So I would appreciate either now or offline some tips on how to involve the city of Half Moon Bay in publicizing the event. So maybe somebody can get to me, back to me later, because apparently leaving things at City Hall is not an option. So anybody that has any comments or questions for me, I'd be happy to hear them.
Madam Mayor, if Claire wants to leave, if she has a flyer, and I think she does because I think it was emailed to me, I can get it to Jessica and we can put it out through our normal channels, eNews, et cetera. There's another forum, I believe, at the library, maybe this week, I think it is, and I think we were asked to put that out on eNews and we did that. So we'll do the same for the one sponsored by MCC.
Great. How should I, how should I get that to you? Just, what do you say?
Yeah, I believe I saw it by email. So if that email format is good enough for you, I'll forward that to Jessica. And if she has any questions, she'll get back to you.
Okay, that format is fine. You can, you can copy that any way you want. I'd appreciate it.
Good stuff going on there. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a proclamation honoring the Coastside Farmers Market 20th Anniversary. And I believe we have Erin Torme here who might want to speak, but I'm going to read the copy. So, "Opening on July 6, 2002, the Coastside Farmers Market has brought a diverse array of high-quality locally and regionally grown agricultural products and artisan foods to the coastside community. Since its beginning, the Coastside Farmers Market has supported our local economy, offering fresh, healthy food sources for our families, and providing an opportunity for farmers to directly engage with consumers. The Coastside Farmers Market and its community of farmers and artisans are committed to cultivating a sustainable food system through their engagement in advancement of farming and food production practices that benefit both people and the planet. The city of Half Moon Bay recognizes the myriad benefits of farmers' markets in general and the Coastside Farmers Market in particular for producers and consumers, and is fully committed to supporting the continued success of the Coastside Farmers Market. Along with my fellow members of the city council, I do hereby recognize and celebrate the Coastside Farmers Market in honor of its 20th anniversary for its many wonderful contributions to the quality of life on the coast side and the essential role it plays in our great community." And I just want to say a couple of words about the person who founded and organized our farmers market, and that was Erin Torme. And she deserves a huge amount of credit for starting this and keeping it alive and making, you know, all of our lives so better. And I look forward to Saturday morning. I know lots of coastiders do too, getting all that great fresh fruits and veggies involving our farmers. But Erin's been a real dynamo. We're indebted to you, Erin. And I'd like to ask you if you'd like to say a few words at this time.
Erin, you're muted. There you go.
You'd think by now, you know. I apologize for that. Thank you. I appreciate your comments, Debbie, and I'm looking forward to working with you to ensure that the market always has a place in the heart of downtown Half Moon Bay. And it's particularly poignant at this time of year as we emerge from the pandemic and all of us are, that are associated with the farmers market, are particularly proud of the work that we have done from the beginning to ensure that that market was something that was available to and for everyone in our community, making sure that we were pilot sites for the first round of the Farmers Market Nutrition Program for seniors, the first round of Farmers Market Nutrition Program for WIC families, pilot sites for Veggie RX and for Market Match. We were one of six markets in the state of California that were asked to help develop a program that allowed people who were participating in CalFresh to get their dollars doubled when they were shopping at farmers markets. In one season alone in 2021, we matched over $80,000 worth of benefits. We also contributed thousands of pounds of unsold produce to ALS and Abundant Grace and Coastside Hope's emergency pantries. And that's actually the work that gets me, that keeps me motivated. And it's been really a pleasure. I'm particularly pleased with the Market Match Program and any of you who are following food security issues, anything that you can do to prompt your local legislators to ensure that SB 907 and 1228, which are the continuance of the Market Match Program and support specifically for farmers' markets to help support paying for the administration of those products, projects, which we don't get. It's just, we're a pastor and that's it, would be deeply appreciated. But again, I appreciate your support and taking the time to wish us happy birthday. And thanks again for the offer of continued support. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
I can't imagine Half Moon Bay without you and the market. I just can't. I think it's vital. And I want to make sure our city clerk and our lobbyist has those two bills on our bill list. We certainly want to support those. Yeah. Other council members would like to comment on support? Vice Mayor?
Sure. I'd like to say thank you again to Erin for her personal effort in this farmers market endeavor. Without Erin, it wouldn't be possible. It wouldn't have been possible, and it wouldn't still be going on, and it wouldn't be as great as it is. Thank you, Erin. God bless you and God bless the farmers market, and I can't wait to see you on Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Brownstone?
Yeah, you know, Erin, Farmers Market is just a favorite destination every Saturday for me and so many others. And in fact, I usually make sure I have a little bit of a snack before I go because things can get way out of hand at the bread and other peace free stands. So, so thank you for providing that incredible service. I know it takes a ton of work and you all make it look so smooth and effortless. So greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Well, muchisimas gracias. You know, thank you very much. I know we met, what, three years ago? And since then, you know, you've been a lot of support, you know, for the, for the community, you know, in, yeah, I mean, in the coast side, in, in advocate and advisor for a lot of the things that we are doing, trying to accomplish, giving opportunity to new farmers to participate in the farmers market. I'm sure the Avila family are very grateful with you, you know, they, you give them an opportunity, you know, during the time of struggle for them. So muchisimas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gracias.
Councilmember Rabeck?
It's wonderful to be able to support our local farmers. I really feel good about going to the farmers market, and I know that the money is well deserved. And I can't thank Erin enough. She's just been a wonderful resource for the entire coast side. She also runs the market in Pacifica, which is another good place. So thank you very much, Erin.
You're welcome.
And I know that John Lynch is looking down on you from heaven, and we'll send you all the best.
And before I go, I also want to give a big, solid, really deep heartfelt thanks to Colleen Granahan, who's been my kind of right-hand gal for the last 12 years that we run the markets, particularly in Pacifica. She's, she'd been really helpful, as have the, and very grateful for the support, the growing support of the city of Half Moon Bay. It was not always, that was not always the story. So I'm really delighted that it's emerged into that realm. And I'm really grateful for everyone that I'm seeing here on the phone, particularly you, Bob, and you, Matthew, at the city staff, and Jill, for all the help that you provide to make it as easy as it can be every year when we have to re-permit every single time. Thank you.
We salute you onward and upward.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another presentation this evening, another proclamation for National Poetry Month. And we're going to get a poem to end. The Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996. National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievements of American poets, introduce Americans to the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bring poets and poetry to the public in immediate and innovative ways, and make poetry an important part of our children's education. National Poetry Month, under the leadership and direction of the Academy of American Poets, is now the largest literary celebration in the world. Poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans, including those in our culturally rich coastal community. Poetry, as an essential part of the arts and humanities, affects every aspect of life in America today, including education, the economy, and community pride and development. Poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists. It has inspired other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. And I do hereby proclaim April 1 through April 30 as National Poetry Month, and call upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all people of Half Moon Bay to observe this month, to celebrate the cultural riches our community has to offer and to recognize the important role of poetry in creating and sustaining this great nation with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. Now it's my pleasure to introduce Samatéo County poet laureate Caroline Goodwin, who will read us a poem.
Thank you so much. And, and thanks for making space for poetry and reading that beautiful proclamation. And I'd just like to thank everyone here for everything you do to make our coast side and Half Moon Bay the most amazing place to be an artist and a poet. Thank you for your time and your work and your hearts and your dedication. And I just offer a poem called Mission Blue that I wrote for the endangered butterflies that live in our county and that are just so beautiful. Mission Blue. "I go up before sunrise, before the light finds the promenade and salt flats and marina, the baylands and lagoon alive with willows and golden eye. Before the door opens in the east and the night shift clocks out, and the parents and older brothers and sisters come home to the younger ones to wake them and prepare the first meal of the day. My own mind opening into the familiar, into the old grief, blue as a glacier, I go up. And when light reaches clear water at the center of every lupin, when blue wings come like a blessing to cover my eyes, there is my grandfather, leaving the garden, offering bright lettuce and the formula for a good crop, one starfish under every potato, and a layer of herring eggs in March. Hand over his heart, hand placing the last rose, the sun opening over the bay into the stone crop, into the blue wings we all hold on to there." Thank you so much for supporting the arts and poetry and for receiving my poem tonight.
Thank you so much, Caroline. It was lovely. Thank you for joining us and taking the time. Have a great poetry month. Okay, I have no mayor's announcements of community activities at this time. Catherine, do we have anything to report out of recent closed sessions?
No, there have been no recent closed sessions and no report out.
Great. Thank you so much. We will now have city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have three or four updates tonight. I think the first one is from Jennifer Chong. I see her queuing it up now.
Good evening, good evening, city council and members of the community. My name is Jennifer Chong, and I am the Public Works Program Manager. I just have two really quick sustainability updates, really just reminders to the community. You've all seen this already, but our Earth Day essay contest is coming to a close this Friday. This is for high school seniors that either go to Half Moon Bay High or live in the city of Half Moon Bay. And you have a chance to win a $1,000 scholarship. We encourage you to take a look at the resources we have on the website, do a little research on some of the really innovative, really nation-leading legislation that's coming out of California. Write us an essay about us and tell us why it's important to our community, because there are a lot of really huge impacts that are coming out of this legislation. So go ahead, visit hmbcity.com/earthdayscholarship and make sure that you submit your application, your personal statement, and your essay to us by 4:00 PM this Friday. And if you're a part of the Half Moon Bay Local Scholarship Program, we might be able to award you your scholarship there in front of all of your peers. So, parents, if you're in the, if you're in the audience right now, if you have a senior, please send them our way. The second reminder that I have for the community is that we are also hosting our Earth Day recycling event on Saturday, April 30. This, this is an event that we have twice per year. This is conveniently placed right after Tax Day. So we offer some document shredding. We allow up to three boxes, banker boxes per household, in addition to compost giveaway and also e-waste recycling. So those electronics, your computers, your printers, your televisions that you're looking to get rid of, do not throw them in the trash. That's actually illegal. Bring them to us. We'll take them off your hands for free. We will be at Smithfield from 9:00 to 12:00 on that Saturday. And make sure you bring your ID or your bill from our public services, as this is an event only for Half Moon Bay residents. That said, when you're done with our event, we encourage you to stop by Cameron's Pub at the end of Wave Crest, where we'll have the Chamber of Commerce and a bunch of our other nonprofit vendors there with educational activities and other opportunities to learn about how Half Moon Bay is supporting, supporting our efforts to go green. So that's all for me. I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Jessica, who has our legislative affair updates.
Thank you so much, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next slide, please. I wanted to just update the council and community and let you know that we have applied for federal funding during the fiscal 23 federal appropriations process. We've submitted requests to Senators Feinstein and Vidia, as well as Congresswoman Spear, and two requests, one for additional funding for the CARES program, and then also for Highway 1 North project and elements of that project. And so we will keep you updated as we hear anything on that. We did receive support letters from Senator Becker, Supervisor Horsley, and Sam Trans for these requests. So we will let you know what we hear in fingers crossed.
Victor?
Good evening, Mayor Reddick, and members of the council. Happy to be here tonight to present another scholarship opportunity, our annual leadership awards. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the Leadership Awards is an annual award program that recognizes outstanding achievements and leadership qualities of middle school and high school students who have distinguished themselves as role models among their peers. And areas such as workout, the community service leadership, social responsibility, and/or overcoming obstacles to accomplish goals are considered in their responses. Next slide, please. And you might have seen this graphic floating around our social media sites. So the Leadership Awards grant five awards each year, one for eighth grade, ninth grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade, with 12th grade being the largest award at $1,000. Applications are due by May 5. And you can access the website on our, on our webpage, the link down below to read more about the awards and to apply. And the one thing I will say is, we've only received about two to three applications so far, so there is still plenty of opportunity to apply and get one of the scholarships. And, sorry, I was gonna say, you know, feel free to contact me. My information is on the website if you have any questions about the application process. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
Okay, on to me. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Reddick, and councilmembers this evening. I just want to give you a quick update on what we've got going on with a downtown sidewalk and parklet activities program. Next slide, please. So you've seen this before. I'm sure this was originally sent to us a couple of years back. This was just a rendering of a possible parklet that was pitched to us by Chris Ridgeway and Cafe Society. It's just a nice little, little visual to kind of give you an idea of what we're working with. Next slide, please. So what we've got going on, we've been working on this activity program, this coordinated approach for allowing for outside dining within the Heritage Downtown. So as you guys have already seen with the parklet at Bartera and Fatoria, parklets typically will take up parking spaces as well sometimes. will take up parking spaces as well sometimes as a sidewalk would allow for an area for landscaping and outside dining. But we also would like to work with sidewalk cafes where, as you've also seen, it's just tables along the sidewalks, still allowing for plenty of ADA accessibility, but for eating and drinking establishments. This all originally started from back when COVID hit and the, the health order wouldn't allow for indoor dining, so we had to really work with our downtown businesses and small businesses to try to figure out a plan to, to help their needs. So we came up with a temporary program, allowing for temporary parklets and sidewalk cafes. Now we're looking for something a little bit more long-term, as we've received a lot of positive feedback from local businesses in the downtown community. With that, we've actually, next slide, please, we've, we've done a lot of outreach with this. I've gone to the Downtown Business Association meeting several times, taken the input of not only the people that potentially are interested, but just the neighboring businesses to see if it would impact them. I've reached out to the Beautification Committee, letting them know, you know, if we're going to have a longer-term parklet, that there may be something that will be out there during like Pumpkin Fest or Fourth of July, but we'll be willing to work with them and make things work, as well as the downtown interested parties, that being the, the ones that are considering a parklet, that are seeing what Bartera and Fatoria has out there and likes the idea of it, now they kind of want to see what the avenues may be for them, as well as the other businesses of how this may or may not affect the parking of the downtown area. So we've really done a lot of research. We've gone to the Architectural Advisory Committee in October of last year, where we got a lot of great feedback. We got a lot of ideas of how we can implement this program and, and get something with an attractive appeal to, to getting some parklets down here and making it a, a little bit easier for these businesses that are interested. We had a planning commission study session on February, received a lot of great feedback from our commissioners, and, and we're ready to take it back to them next Tuesday for our public hearing. And that being said, we've also created on our city website, under our, under our projects page, we do have a, a page there where we're going to be uploading information, where we'll be uploading the whole packet once it's completed, as well as FAQs, anything else that we, we think is pertinent to this program. And of course, if anybody has any questions or comments, or if they're unable to attend next week's meeting, they can always reach out to me and I can make sure that our commissioners get their communications.
Good to see you, Joe. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
And Madam, Madam Mayor, that concludes city manager updates for this evening.
Okay, thank you. We will move on. Looks like we have consent calendar. Are there any items that council members wish to pull for further discussion? I had originally thought about pulling the, the item, closing out the South Main Street Highway One project, but it, it appears that citizen concerns have been addressed by staff. I thought staff did a, did a good job, and I appreciated the, the comments from Jan Hansen, bringing attention because I know the other people are, are concerned about the project. I would just tell people who are having issues with that intersection to please slow down. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar. A motion and a second.
I move that we accept the consent calendar. By resolution, authorize the city manager, oops, wave readings of resolutions and ordinances, warrants for the month of March 2022. Accept that list. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Towns and Public Affairs Incorporated to provide state and federal advocacy services for a period of one year at the amount of $60,000. By resolution, authorize the city manager or his designee to file a notice of completion for the 2022 Sidewalk Replacement Project and release the retention funds 30 days after recordation of the notice of completion. Adopt a resolution establishing job classification and salary schedule for maintenance assistance position. And authorize the city manager or his designee to, designee to file a notice of completion for the Highway One Safety and Operational Improvements South Project and release the project retention funds and project performance bond and labor and materials bond 30 days after recordation of the notice of completion. Adopt a resolution directing staff to proceed with the purchase of approximately 50 Big Belly waste receptacles and install them in accordance with Phase One of the new downtown solid waste management plan and remove, recycle, and/or repurpose existing street cans in the downtown area. Dissolve to authorize the city engineer to complete his review of the plat and legal description for permanent and temporary easements and authorize the city attorney to review and approve as to form the permanent and temporary easements and authorize the city manager to execute permanent and temporary easements based upon review and approval of the city engineer and city attorney and accept payment from Coastside County Water District for the approved, appraised value of the easements for the Coastside County Water District Water Main Construction under Pillar Cetus Creek and Oak Park Avenue. Adopt a resolution authorizing the display of the mental health awareness flag at City Hall for the month of May 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Brownston?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubert?
Yes.
Councilmember Rorback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're moving on to item two, which is ordinance and public hearings. And the first item, item two A, is appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a coastal development permit for 880 Stone Pine Road, the City Corporation Yard Upgrade Project, file number PDB 21-053. This is an appeal and is subject to special procedures. Tonight's public hearing is to consider an appeal filed challenging the Planning Commission's approval of the coastal development permit for the Corp Yard Project at 880 Stone Pine Road. The applicant, John Doughty, Public Works Director, and the appellant, Mike Ferrera, will be given 10 minutes each to speak. Upon opening of the public hearing, each speaker will be given an opportunity to speak. As always, we ask that speakers try not to duplicate previous comments. Acknowledging concurrence is adequate for the record. Typically, speakers are provided up to three minutes. However, depending upon the number of speaker cards submitted, the council may use their discretion to manage the hearing, including reducing the time allotted to speakers. Please use the raise your hand feature now if you'd like to speak when it's time, so we can appropriately manage the hearing. Before we move to staff presentation, I will ask that all council members state to the record whether they have received any communication outside of tonight's hearing regarding this matter, or whether they made a site visit and what they observed. For example, I had visited the site on X occasions on this date, and then familiar with the site and surrounding properties. I spoke to so-and-so regarding the proposed project. The scope of the conversation included, you know, A, B, C. So I'll start with Councilmember Hubert.
Thank you. I, I did, I have visited the site in the past, not, not recently, within the last two weeks. I had a meeting with, with Jill Ikas about the proposed Corp Yard and, and a fence that is proposed to go in the property. And I believe so, but nothing I can remember of.
Okay, Councilmember Rorback?
I visited the site maybe three years ago. That was the last time.
Councilmember Brownston?
Same as Councilmember Rorback.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes, I visited the site. I've also had discussions with the appellant, Mr. Ferrara, and with our Planning Commissioner about the proposed site and the fencing involved.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Penrose. I've been on the site several times, not recently, and I have not spoken to anyone since the, the filing of the appeal. We'll move on to staff presentation, following a brief discussion by the applicant. I guess they get 10 minutes, so we'll start with John Doughty.
Mayor Riddick, Jill Ikas here, your Community Development Director. I'm actually going to give the staff presentation on behalf of the planning review for this project and the Planning Commission's action before John gets his applicant presentation. I hope that's following the protocol that we, I think we intended to follow, checking with city.
Correct, yes, that is correct.
This, this item as an appeal before you is, the whole package of a coastal development permit is back, back to you, which is why you had such a full packet on this item, and we do want to make sure that you have the full background. So I'm going to go ahead and get into our staff presentation mode. If you could, let me know if you're seeing the slide. Great, we'll get started. So this presentation is going to outline the background, project description, the Planning Commission action, and the main points of the appeal. For background, the city recently purchased 880 Stone Pine, a 22-acre site from the Peninsula Open Space Trust, known as POST. There is a long history associated with the acquisition, and it is beyond the realm of the permitting matters at hand. Suffice it to say, the city has been operating its corporation yard on this property for almost 20 years. With the purchase, the intent is for this use to continue and the facilities to be upgraded. This project has been in the city's capital improvement program for the past two years. As part of the purchase and sales agreement with POST, the city also agreed to accommodate a future segment of the Pillar Cetus Creek Trail in a recorded conservation easement. Here's an aerial view of the site. Please make note of this abandoned agricultural pond in this northwest corner, and then Pillar Cetus Creek, which forms the southern boundary of the property. There is an important relationship between the pond and the creek. The pond has been identified in past biological resource evaluations as a breeding pond for California red-legged frogs, and the creek provides habitat for both the frogs and the endangered San Francisco garter snake. Maintaining a connection between the pond and the creek may always need to be a primary consideration for this property in order to protect these special status species. We'll address that a bit more later. Here are photos of those two features. This is the pond, and here's the creek. Also, getting into, moving towards the project description and what's proposed, most folks are familiar with the equipment, storage, and staging uses on the site that support our Public Works operations. Now for the project description. First and foremost, the project includes a conservation corridor to maintain a protected connection between the pond and the creek for the California red-legged frog. This 50-foot-wide swath shown in green would have exclusion fencing that would keep animals contained and allow for them to travel unharmed, including a tunnel, tunnels under the roadway, specially designed for that species. The entire corridor, which includes additional exclusionary fencing, oops, excuse me, was developed by Dr. Mark Jennings. He's a preeminent herpetologist with specific expertise in the special status species of concern for this site. Dr. Jennings worked with SWCA. SWCA is a local environmental firm that the city hired to prepare biological assessments and the environmental review for this project later during council's deliberations. Should you have any questions about that? Jessica Henderson is here to answer your questions. She is with SWCA, and she'd be happy to do that. Do also note the other highlighted areas. The conservation corridor is shown in yellow. This is where the creek trail could go someday. The pond is shown in red, including its 100-foot wetland buffer, and the creek is down here in blue, and also its buffers have to be accommodated as well. You can see how much wildlife affects this property and the use of this property. In addition to the wildlife corridor, make note on this slide, one of the things the project includes is a new two-way access roadway. Currently, there's a two-road system. This is one loop in, and then the loop out is not shown on this map, but we'll get to that later. The southern road would be abandoned with this project, and the northern road would be replaced, and we'd have a two-way road. John Doughty in his discussion with you will talk a little bit more about the road, so I'll, I'll skip that. Zooming in, the project description includes a new storage building in this location. As you saw, there's a lot of equipment, and we also need to have material storage. These are, this is a material storage facility. The existing house would stay. The house was converted to office and meeting space for your public works staff. There's also some emergency vehicle materials back in this corner here. This big square is a solar array, and then you can see that the parking would become quite organized, as we really don't have a, a detailed parking lot at this point in time. So it, it just brings a lot of order to the site. This is an elevation, these are, this is a prefab structure. This is the sprung structure that would be the storage facility. And just like any other applicant for a coastal development permit, Public Works prepared plans, architectural renderings, visual simulations, and even installed story poles, which is a requirement. You can see here, story poles, just faintly, this appears for the sprung structure. In the foreground over here is for the material storage. The solar array is right over here, it's pretty hard to see, it's closer to these cypress And we are now coming to the matter of the Planning Commission action and then the appeal. The Commission has had this on their agenda three times. They have a study session in August. This was originally scheduled for a hearing before the Commission on March 22nd. It was continued to a date certain a week later, and we'll get into that in a bit. On March 29th, the Commission adopted an initial study mitigated negative declaration that is pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, I may say ISMND if I do, that means I'm referring to this document, which studies the environmental impacts of the proposed project. They also approved the coastal development permit and a tree removal permit. And in their approval of the coastal development permit, they approved it with modifications. We note here that the SEQA, for this, the SEQA coverage for this project had a heavy emphasis on biological resources, as was evident in the project description. That includes this truly carefully designed conservation corridor. The Commission also evaluated the project relative to the city's certified local coastal program, including visual resource and natural resource requirements. Tree removal and replacements, significant replacements at a ratio of 10 to 1 were also part of, part of the picture here. The SEQA process requires notification of resource agencies, which was done for this project. In this case, two agencies submitted comments. That included Caltrans and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Services, or CDFW. The CDFW letter The CDFW letter expressed some concerns about the project and the conservation corridor. Staff and the consultants reviewed these letters in detail and provided in-depth responses to both agencies more than 10 days before the hearing on March 22. Staff heard in advance of the March 22 meeting that commissioners were concerned about the CDFW letter, and it was for this reason that Public Works Director Doughty requested a continuance to March 29 to give CDFW more time to review the city's response, because they had not yet acknowledged it. Staff reached out to CDFW, and it was told that a response was pending, but as of this time, none has been received. Back to the conservation corridor. This takes us back to this yellow line. The yellow and the green represent the original design from Dr. Jennings. And we note that planning commissioners routinely direct questions to staff before their hearings. In this case, staff learned that individual commissioners may be interested in an expanded wildlife corridor in part to be responsive to CDFW's comments. Thus, we provide an option shown with this blue line. That would mean this yellow line here, which represents exclusionary fencing, would not be installed, and instead, there would be fencing adjacent to the roadway. The commission preferred the expanded area and approved the project with a condition to modify the wildlife corridor, basically as shown in this graphic. This was detailed in your written staff report, so I'll go ahead and move on. On April 7, a timely appeal was filed. The appeal cites two primary issues, the matters of the expanded area of the wildlife corridor and with regards to the roadway configuration. The appellant will present to you, but our understanding from the appeal letter, which is attached to your staff report, is that the blue line is, it's not necessary. And in fact, the original design is preferred to maintain more of the western portion of the parcel. The configuration of the road, this brown line here is showing essentially the existing roadway alignment, which has these kind of hard turns. Again, I'll let John Doughty describe and explain the intent with the proposed new roadway accessway. And I don't know what happened to that slide, but we'll come here. I did throw this one in. We have been talking about this site with you because back in November, at your housing work session, council directed staff to prepare a feasibility analysis for potential use of the western portion of this site for affordable housing. We're still finishing that work. It's very detailed. There are quite a few considerations. I do put it out here because this was not a matter before the planning commission, but we know that this is something that you've been thinking about, and it has come up, and I think it was kind of alluded to in the appeal. And our mayor has already reviewed the process. So John Doughty will come up next, representing Public Works as the applicant. And you know that your staff is here, ready to answer questions, as well as your biologist. And your recommendation is quite detailed, and I do want to spend a moment on it so that you can have it in the back of your mind while you're listening to the applicant and the appellant. There's three pieces to it. The SEQA document, the ISMND, was not part of the appeal. It was adopted by the planning commission. It still needs to be acknowledged if you are going to take any action on this project, and so one of your statements needs to do that. Then we're going to request that you act on the matter of appeal. And staff has differentiated recommendations on the two matters brought to you on appeal. One is to uphold the appeal with respect to the fencing. What we're saying is, staff recommends the yellow line, the original line for the fence line. And we are recommending maintaining the configuration of the roadway as proposed by Public Works. And then there is also, all the rest of this will come together in your detailed resolution with findings and conditions of approval. And that is my bit, and I'm going to, there's a slide that John Doughty will want to present to you, so I will have it ready for him.
I'd actually like to ask council members whether they have clarifying questions for you. First, Jill, before moving on. That's a lot of information.
Very good.
Council members, anybody have questions for Jill? For part of the presentation? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the presentation by the applicant, John Doughty.
Jill, will you get back to the slide? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Obviously, this is an interesting position to be in. As opposed to staff, I am applicant. But, and clearly, I'm working on behalf of all the community and the you and the city manager in this respect. I would like to first thank the council for allowing this item to be moved on to this agenda, and we really appreciate that. And my staff and I greatly support, and thank you for your efforts to purchase this property for purposes of improving the environment and our operations at the corporation yard. So thanks again for your efforts. I want to thank the appellant for a timely filing, which allowed us to get to this meeting. I really do appreciate that. And I also want to thank the planning commission, Doug Garrison and Todd Seeley, for their efforts to get to this point. Todd has acted as the project manager, and has done a great job. But Doug and others have been really helping move this along, and of course, our consultants all have done a great job. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that time is of the essence. I think it's noted in the staff reports, both for the planning commission and to the council to some extent. We have a commitment with our loan proceeds to expend and utilize those funds from the I-Bank in their entirety by August 1 of 2022. So we are in a fast track to try to get to a bid. And again, that is in part the reason why this was a critical timeframe for us to get to hearing and be considered. I, obviously, we are in, are fine with the staff's recommendation with regard to item one of the appeal. It's really a policy question, a policy issue for council, but we are in support of what we originally proposed and obviously would be fine with any adjustment made in that regard. I wanted to just take a moment, first of all, to thank Jill for her efforts as well and for a very, very detailed presentation, and it makes my life a lot easier here as the applicant. And I spoke to this within the staff report, Jill did, and we prepared, and our responses are there. Basically, the design of the driveway, and I want to reiterate, this is a driveway, not a street, not a roadway. It is not built to public street standards or anything with this deal. This is a basic driveway, like it serves any other commercial or multifamily property. That being said, Jill alluded to it a little bit, but the brown area reflected there is what is the existing alignment, and then the new driveway ties into the existing driveway. So you can see right at that point where the brown-- follows the lines with the existing driveway. Jill mentioned that we, in the process of this project, are giving up the one-way loop system to go to a two-way driveway. And notably, since we're doing a major update, upgrade, we are responsible and obligated to comply with all current codes, including the fire code and the fire district's requirements. And this road, this driveway, whatever you wish to call it, was ultimately designed to comply with fire department apparatus requirements. Also was designed, the geometrics, to allow us to bring materials in, that we do bring in, the types of vehicles that come in to deliver and drop off. And again, this also is often used as a lay-down area for city and other utility projects. So we have some large vehicles that do come in here. From, so that is why you have the geometrics there, again, to comply with all the requirements and the provisions. We find it extremely difficult, virtually impossible, if you actually go out to the site and look. You can see the tire tracks. We don't make, and a lot of the vehicles coming out there don't make 90-degree turns of that nature with large vehicles, and you can see how the alignment works there. The last thing I would mention is that we understand that there may in fact be a project that comes at some point down the line here. And we acknowledge clearly as a city agency that we will work with and comply with and modify access whatever is necessary. So I just want to say again, as the applicant, putting the driveway here does not preclude anything from happening, does not eliminate potential density, does not prevent us, the city or a nonprofit, if housing is the choice there, to be able to go forward with the greatest density possible. So from that perspective, I just would ask that you please affirm the commission's decision with regard to the alignment and the material. I understand the questions, concerns, and issues, but that would be our request. And with that, I will turn, I'll answer any questions you have or turn it over to the appellant. Thank you.
Well, you can reserve three minutes for a rebuttal, if you'd like. I'm guessing we save questions for when we, following the public hearing portion, is another opportunity to ask questions?
Certainly.
Okay, so we'll move on to the appellant's remarks. And Mr. Ferrara, you have up to 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Ruddy and council members. I will, if you were to pull my chain about this property, I could go for hours. But I'm actually going to try to get out of here in what's less than 10 minutes. I appreciate that staff supports the first part of the appeal to read, to go back to the yellow line. And actually, the blue line is showing up. Is the drawing displayed, actually, Jessica?
I'll put it up now.
The, the blue line is what principally led me to file the appeal. And with staff support to go back to the yellow line, I want to express my appreciation for that. There were several things wrong with the blue line, in my estimate, one of which is that the terrain would isolate the critters down in that pocket to the left, and they would never find the corridor to get to the creek. The, but I won't go any further on that. I really think the staff has made a good case for going back to the yellow line. As for the road, actually, that was a secondary concern, but just thinking about the public purse a little bit, the, once the money's spent to put the road in, I was concerned about whatever new project you put in there would be burdens with the cost of removing it. And that's why I suggested that rounding the corners of the existing road to allow the larger trucks to go through there might be the better option, as the road has held up for quite a few decades. But again, I'm just going to congratulate the city. If you look to the south of this project, where the green line is, that's a goodly portion of the property that's being given to the environment. And there was a photo shown earlier, an aerial photo. And if you look to the south of the creek, you can see what, how poorly the properties to the south treat the buffer zone and the creek. By comparison, what you're planning to do is stellar. This will be one of the best-protected parts of any of our streams in the city. So with that, I leave the road judgment to you, but I would appreciate your support on the blue line going away, basically. Thank you.
Mr. Doughty, you have three minutes, allowing a rebuttal?
I have no rebuttal. Thank you, Mike, for, I think, a very fair assessment, and I appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, John. I'm going to open the public hearing. And at this time, there will be three minutes per speaker. Jessica, please call the first speaker.
Any speakers on this item? Please use the raise your hand feature. I don't see any hands there.
All right then, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we can commence council deliberation, including, you know, asking any questions of staff regarding your presentations. We'll start with Vice Mayor Penrose.
I have no questions. I had excellent discussion with both Mr. Ferrara and with Ms. Ikas about the proposed changes. And I am in complete accord with Mr. Ferrara and with the staff on the current recommendation, that is to eliminate the blue line, which takes up an unnecessarily large amount of property and giving it to the, I keep calling it the three-legged frog. It's the red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake. Keep it at the yellow line, which was the original proposal by the biologist and by city staff. And I have no real objections to the changes in the road at this point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Penrose. Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. After, you know, my conversation with Jill and reviewing letters from the state and reviewing the video from the planning commission and the presentation from the last meeting, you know, one of the things that comes to mind, you know, and it's something we don't use, is that a proper land use, you know, comes along with, you know, with the smart development, the need of a community. One of the reasons we proposed to look into, to do a feasibility report on the property possibly building housing for a community, low-income housing that is in great need. And I'm just, you know, the city's self-recommendation about the yellow line, you know, that's where it's supposed to be, not at the blue line. It was advised to, it was recommended to do a fence, you know, that will go along the access road, you know, the blue line, something that will be difficult to eventually move it in case. So it needed to be moved. So that's why, you know, proper land use, you know, make use of every little piece of land that we could, you know, to the benefit of our community. It makes, you know, the yellow line makes more sense. You know, the staff recommendation makes more sense than the blue line. The access road, maybe right now, is an access road, you know, a dirt road. Who knows in the future if it's approved? When it gets approved to build housing, you know, in the property, it's going to become a street. You know, it will become a street that will have access, you know, for the community that lives, moves into the property, for the courtyard. So having changed the access road, you know, even if it's on dirt-- So having changing the access road, you know, even if it's on dirt, you know, is just something that I, I will think about it, you know, about, yes, not moving it, but, you know, think about the, in the future, what it will look like when it becomes a city street. Because that's, that's, I mean, that's what's going to happen. It will become, eventually become a city street. So leave it, because it will give us the opportunity to make proper use of the land, you know, for a community, for a park, you know, we have housing, you know, a park, community gardens, you know, something, you know, yes, have more access to the land, you know, like I said, proper land use, you know. So, but in a great report, you know, it was, I continue to learn a lot from, from Jill. You know, Jill, thank you for, for your, your knowledge, you know, the, you know, thinking about providing housing for a community. So it's a, it's, I mean, it's a, it's, it's looking good. It is looking good. The frogs, the red legged frogs, the snakes will have, will be protected, you know, with a proper fence, and it will funnel into, into the habitat. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Anyone else? Let's see, no other hands raised? Councilmember Brownstone or Rabeck?
I absolutely agree with everyone so far about relocating the fence to the original orientation that the biologist suggested. And in terms of the, the second part of the appeal, the realignment of the roadway, I guess I'm more or less convinced that, from a safety standpoint, it should follow what the original city recommendation would be, with the understanding that if in the future we needed to change it, we would. As Councilman Jimenez says, the real thrust of what we care about is the ability to someday build affordable housing on that site. So we don't want to jeopardize anything that would jeopardize the, the ability to put up high density, affordable housing. And neither of these really does jeopardize that, and that's what I really care about. So I, I would go along with the staff recommendation to go with the yellow line, and also to keep the safer alignment of the roadway. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rabeck. Councilmember Brownstone?
I have nothing to add to the comments that have been well stated, and agree with the staff recommendation I've been offering up for our resolution.
I also concur with the staff recommendation. I think, as recommended, both pieces, you know, make sense. And I congratulate the various parties working out, you know, agreement on these issues. And I think we can take a roll call. Maybe we should put the recommendation up again, so the council member making the, the recommendation, as ease of access?
I move that we acknowledge the adopted IS, MND, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and that matters under consideration. With this appeal, do not trigger the need to recirculate or do supplemental environmental review. And that we consider the matter brought forth on appeal, and uphold the appeal with respect to the location of the wildlife corridor fencing in accordance with the city, city's biologist's recommendations as originally presented to the planning commission, and that we deny the appeal with respect to the configuration of the access drive, and thereby approve PDP 21-053, including a coastal development permit, site and design review, and free removal permit for the City of Hafnum Bay Corporation Yard upgrade project at 880 Stone Pine Road.
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rabeck?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Petros?
Yes.
Mayor Rabeck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Mike.
We're moving on to item 2B, a discussion of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. This is also a public hearing. Staff?
Good evening again. I'm back to talk to you about the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. This is going to be a much more focused discussion than we have had in past hearings for this item. Let us begin here, hold on. A little costume change, okay. Do you have the slide? Good, okay. So the item before you is a, a little bit of a tweak to your ADU ordinance, and it has to do with recent coastal commission action. Back in 2018, council adopted a fully revised ADU ordinance. It was quickly certified by the coastal commission and found consistent by the Department of Housing and Community Development with state ADU law. We've been using it for a while, and then a whole bunch of new legislation came through for state ADU law, and we needed to update again. So we were working on that back in late 2019 with the planning commission, and then early 2020 with this council. You continued the item, you were seeking more input from the California Coastal Commission on a few matters that seemed to have some connection to coastal act protection needs. That took a while, and the commission did release some broad guidance, and nothing quite as specific as we had hoped. But we were able to come back, and council then concluded work on the ordinance for a complaint ordinance with most recent state law, with a second reading in August. So the accessory dwelling unit ordinance is part of the zoning code. The zoning code is part of the local coastal program, which means that council's action is not the final action. So we have to bring it to the coastal commission. Essentially, we package it up and make an application for an amendment to the city's local coastal program. We did that last fall. Commission staff reviewed it, they asked for more information, as they often do, and we finally were able to settle in on a hearing date in February, where the coastal commission certified conditionally the ordinance that this council had adopted. And, and they did it with a couple very narrow targeted modifications. The modifications are related to parking in coastal access, parking impacted areas. These are areas on some of our western neighborhoods where we previously mapped them in the 2018 ordinance based on a field survey and other information that we have, where we know our coastal visitors like to park in the neighborhood to get to the beach. And that parking is important to the coastal commission. One of the primary pillars of the coastal act is to maximize coastal access, and so they're, they're very sensitive to parking requirements in, in coastal access parking areas. So they made two modifications that are shown in, strike through, underlying in your staff report to, to highlight them, and they are part of the ordinance update as a whole. They would make parking reductions in the coastal access parking areas harder to get, basically having stricter parking requirements in those areas. In the event of a historic resource in such an area, the applicant, if, if they were trying to waive a parking requirement, would have to demonstrate that the provision of parking would actually cause some impact to the historic resource. They also took away the applicability of an incentive for a parking reduction. This is an incentive for folks who would come to build a single family home. State law allows developers of new single family homes, if they also provide an ADU, to have reduced parking. The coastal commission adjustment in this area would not allow for that incentive in the coastal access restricted areas for, for parking. So in sum, this is, these are really narrow changes. In staff's opinion, it probably will affect just a handful of properties over time. I'm not aware of any applications in the last few years that would have had anything different about them relative to, to these two tweaks. All else remains the same as council had adopted the ordinance. There were many matters that you spent quite a bit of time on, and those are all highlighted in your staff report. This is a quick summary here. If you have questions about them, please let me know. We're hopeful that we can move on with this, this ordinance at this point, and are eager and really encourage you to make this first reading. We would bring the second reading back to you as soon as possible. We also, with this update, intended to start charging a measured D fee for these ADUs. We're spending an inordinate amount of time processing them, and this is something that we had, we had talked about a year ago. I'm, I'm bringing it up now because it's been a while, and I'm not sure if that's still ringing true for you, but that, that's something that we intend to do with the V schedule update this year, which is part of your budget process. After a second reading, we have an obligation to go back to the two state agencies. The coastal commission should be very straightforward. We are presenting to you the exact language that the commission modified the ordinance with, and so the executive director should be able to confirm that, and, and get the confirmation from, from the commission for that. And then we will also submit the ordinance again to the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. They review every jurisdiction's ADU ordinance, and we are required to submit it to them within 60 days of adoption. And they'll do a consistency review. So we'll possibly get a letter from them at some point. And with that, this is the staff recommendation. I know Catherine has reviewed this item, so if there's any legal questions, she, of course, is prepared to cover those, and I'm here to answer planning questions. Thank you.
Clarifying questions from council members before I open the public hearing. Are there any? Okay, I will open the public hearing. Jessica, are there hands raised at this time?
Yes. We'll start. Mike Ferrera?
Oh, Mayor Ruddick and council members, I am surprisingly speaking in favor of this ordinance change, and would entreat you to pass it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I have no other hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the city council for questions or deliberations. Anybody? Motion to approve?
I move to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rabeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Petros?
Yes.
Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you for the excellent and thorough report, Joe.
Thank you.
We're moving on to resolutions and staff reports. First item, item 3A, is awarded, honored to read this, award of construction contract and professional services agreements for the John L. Carter Park Improvements Project. This is capital improvements plan number 0611.
Good evening, everybody. Give me one second, I will share my screen, and just checking to see if everyone can see that. Is the, the full presentation screen, everything is good to go?
Yes, thanks, Jonathan.
Awesome, thank you so much. So, good evening, everybody, council members, fellow city staff, and members of the public. If you don't know me, I am Jonathan Wu, the Assistant Engineer for the City of Hafnum Bay. It is my first presentation here with city council, so it's very nice to meet you all. And I am very excited and very pleased to present this item to you all. And this is pretty much for the John L. Carter Park Improvements Project, and I'm excited to go ahead and move this project over to the next steps. So for city council's action tonight, we want to request a few things. One, to transfer $700,000 from the general fund to this capital budget, to this project budget. Two, to award a construction contract in addition to contingencies with Wickman Construction Development out of San Francisco, California. And to also execute a contract with SWCA for environmental and biological services, along with bag engineering for geotechnical services for this project. So before we kind of get into the project spec, specifications, I wanted to talk to you, talk to you guys about a little background, and kind of what we've gone through to get to this point where we are right now. So we've really gone through all the entitlements at the moment, and we went through the planning commission, as well as the Parks and Rec Commission. We've also contracted with ELS Architecture and Urban Design for Architectural Support during construction, along with Brif and Structures Incorporated for project management and construction management support services, again, throughout construction. One thing we want to point out is just a huge thanks to, and a huge shout out to Assembly Member Berman and his office for really helping us out with this grant. And I'll talk a little bit more about the grant in just a little bit. And pretty much they are the main reason to allow us to go ahead and move forward with this project, and move forward with construction. At the moment, we've taken necessary steps to go ahead and accept a $4.75 million grant, and we're practically pretty much ready to go. One thing I do want to note, and I'll, I'll kind of touch into this a little bit down the line, is that this is a reimbursable grant. Again, I'll, I'll touch into it a little bit more. So kind of moving down on the timeline here, earlier in January of this year, we advertised the project and requested for public bids. And in March, just a little bit over a month ago, we've opened bids, and we've received about seven bids, which is, which is a pretty good turnout for many projects that we have with the city. So this pretty much location is, is really intended, Carter Park is really intended to be a large focal point, a main focal point. And this project kind of includes a complete transformation of the project. So on your screen, it shows the improvements, and we noted this on the staff report, but the highlighted areas that you can see on your screen are improvements that are pretty much not within this contract. And I could touch a little bit more into that a little bit down the line as well. If you want any more detail, the staff report provides that as, in addition to that. So here on your screen, you kind of see a overview, a, a kind of like a diagram or layout of pretty much the improvements that are planning to be installed for the new Carter Park. Um. that are planning to be installed for the new Carter Park. We can always come back to this, but for the meantime, I just want to move on to the next few slides. So this project in general is considered to be a public works project, which by law, it requires us to go ahead and publicly bid the project and go through its necessary steps and necessary processes. And like I mentioned, we received seven bids, and we kind of looked through each and every one of them. And we determined that Wickman Construction and Development was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And with that said, we did our due diligence, we did our background checks, our references, just to make sure that Wickman was a good fit for this project. And from that, we're pretty happy that the bid came in about 3.4% over the project's, the engineer's estimate, which is fairly good. So after running through the calculations, we came to a conclusion that the project, the cost to complete the project here is about $6.36 million. In order to complete the project and award the contracts, we're asking city council to move $700,000 from the general funds to the project budget. These funds will be utilized throughout this fiscal year, fiscal year '21, '22, along with the next fiscal year, '22, '23. And kind of like how I mentioned before, this grant is reimbursable. So whenever we get invoices from the contractors, the city will be paying those funds out of the project funds, but then after, soon after, we will be going ahead and requesting for reimbursement. In all, we believe and we anticipate this project to last about eight months or so, give or take a month or two throughout the entire construction period. Kind of like what I mentioned before, we left three items out of the contract due to budget constraints. And you could see it on your screen over there, a little bit more broken down. But for these specific three items, the city does currently have some plans to work with some partners on some fundraising efforts. And with those fundraising efforts will definitely require city council action, which will eventually bring those to you as necessary when the time comes. So in all, city staff recommends to adopt the resolution to, one, transfer $700,000 from the general funds to the project budget. Two, to award Wickman Development and Construction a construction contract of $4,971,000, in addition to approving $745,000 and some change of contingency funds, which is exactly 15% of that construction contract. And finally, to execute contracts with SWCA for bio and environmental services, along with bag engineering for geotechnical services throughout the construction. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions, and I thank you for your time.
Mayor, if I could speak just briefly. And one, I'm so glad that, you know, to Jonathan have the stage here tonight, and he's a rock star, and he did so great, so we really appreciate that.
Yes, I really, I just wanted to say, I thought that was a wonderfully concise report with all the critical information we needed, so thank you, Jill.
Thank you for that. You know, I won't go into the litany of thank yous, but this is really a celebration. And, you know, in another time, in another world before 2019, we would have had cake and, you know, and all kinds of good stuff tonight for doing this award, I believe, this contract. But we'll do a virtual one, and we'll have a real one at some point. But I just want to say thank you to all the folks out there, the Parks and Rec Commission, who pushed along this for Jill and the work that she did and her staff on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for just our project manager Karen Decker and Matthew for hanging out and hanging along on this. So way too many people, my eyes, just way too many people to thank, obviously, Assemblymember Berman and you, the council, for having the vision to say, go for it. So I just wanted to say, you know, this really, it doesn't feel as much like a celebration as I, as we, you know, I might like it to be, but it is a celebration. We're excited with this, and this is a big project, but it's going to be a big undertaking. And we really ask that the community bear with us during construction and some challenges that will be out there, and we ask them to be very safe on Stone Pine Road. There will be construction traffic using Stone Pine Road, and we'll get some information out on E-News and continue to keep people informed and updated about the status and where we are, and also about when the groundbreaking and ultimately ribbon cutting will be for that. So thank you for letting me take a couple more minutes with that deal and do those thank yous. And again, we are looking forward to your support tonight for these actions and moving the project forward.
I have just a quick question. So have we approached yet the mall owner about, you know, staging, construction staging at the parking lot?
We have, we have been working with the owner of Stone Pine Center. We are also working with the owners of the Business Park and Mariners Church. Our, the city engineer has actually identified a better path to travel for, at least for waterline connection and some other things going from there rather than our existing waterline. So, and also, we're working with them for some of the staging and laydown areas as well. So we're trying to keep as much of the impact away from Stone Pine itself, although we're going to be working with them for some temporary easements and some permanent access easements that need to be formalized from, you know, basically the existing. So, and Matthew has been, from the, Chedister, from the CMO's office, has been helping us along in those conversations. And so, yes, we are working on that and know that we have those efforts, and some of those will be coming back to you as the council when we reach final agreements on those.
Yeah, and I would make sure that I do, you know, a lot of leading outreach to Cypress Cove residents in their HOA as well, alerting them that, you know, not the day before, but, you know, giving them sufficient notice that there will be activity, there will be activity there.
Karen Decker, I have to give a big shout out. She really set the stage for this, really worked closely with them, and has set a high bar for us to live up to in terms of continuing the communication and the working collaborative with them. But we're up to the task, and we'll do so.
Okay, council members with questions for staff? Anybody? Anybody? I don't see any, so I will weigh in again. I think it's going to be really important to not cut corners on the sound system. You know, if we want this to be, you know, a real asset and potentially allow for, you know, revenue generating, you know, activities, I think it's going to be really important to not cut corners. We want a good sound system. We want something that minimizes reverb, you know, we want to be able to directionally, you know, aim the sound to minimize, you know, impacts to adjacent areas. We want it to be absolutely clearly, you know, audible. It's really got to be, you know, top of the line or close. I would not get a crappy sound system. So, you know, I think we need to, you know, aggressively, you know, fundraise for, you know, the right solution there. It's a theatrical project. We need good lighting and good sound.
Mayor, just in response, if there's, if that was a question at all, or at least an affirmation, we see this, this is going to have to be a very, like, very good system, soundboard, all of the things that you would see in a production kind of deal with that. So that's why we really felt like we needed to pull it out, talk to partners, talk to folks, and really evaluate it separate from a general contractor doing that work. So that was a big reason, because this is important, lighting and the AV.
Very, very important. And the signage will be too at some point, too.
It will.
Also, you know, you know, I know we have, you know, Friends of Parks and Recreation, and there'll be others who will want to donate, and you know, might develop programs for that. But I definitely want to see, like, a subcommittee of the Parks and Rec Commission helping to coordinate that. I think that the Parks and Rec Commission needs to remain intimately involved in the project as it goes, fundraising, et cetera. So I don't think their job is over here, is all I have.
And Madam Mayor, I can just confirm that that subcommittee is in place and working with us. So, yes, we've identified both the Friends, the Chamber of Commerce, and then, of course, the performing arts groups here on the coast as all important players and getting the right people involved in fundraising and making sure that this, those very performance-specific improvements get done right here. So appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, and I think, you know, just based on what I've been seeing as this project's been developing, you know, staff has properly prioritized the good process. You know, we've had good contractors, so let's keep up that good work. It's going to, you know, be transformational, and I'm really excited. So is there a council member who would like to make a motion? Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes, I note that we adopt the following resolutions, authorizing the city manager to authorize the administrative services director to transfer $700,000 from the general fund to capital improvement project, number 0611, also known as the John L. Carter Park Improvements Project. Two, to award and execute a construction contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Wickman Development and Construction of San Francisco, in the bid amount of $4,971,000, and approve a construction contingency not exceeding an amount of $745,615, $650, which is 15%, and three, execute a professional service agreement with SWCA Inc. for biological and environmental services in the amount of $35,079. And four, execute a professional service agreement with Bay Area Geotechnical Group for material testing and special inspection services in the amount of $114,150.
Decker?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Petros?
Yes.
Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Riddick, we didn't ask for public comment on that item, but I also didn't see any hands raised. So I don't know if we want to just check if there was anyone who wanted to speak.
Why don't we do that?
Okay, if there was anyone who wanted to speak on this item, you can raise your hand now.
Sorry about that, I was too excited.
I don't see any hands raised, so I think we're okay.
Okay, good, thanks, everybody. Item 3B, Community Services Assistance Grants Program. Sorry, Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes, I have to recuse myself for this item.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Community Services Financial Assistance Grants Program. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor Riddick. I'll be taking this one on. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see this? Perfect. So good evening, Mayor Riddick and members of the council. My name is Victor Ayton, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office, and I'm happy to be here tonight to present on the Community Services Financial Assistance Grants Program, or CSFA as more commonly known. Starting with some background, the CSFA grant program was originally created to support local nonprofit organizations serving the city of Half Moon Bay. For fiscal year 2021, '22, the city took a hybrid approach to funding by providing $200,000 to the same seven organizations that received funding during the previous fiscal year for COVID-19 relief and recovery services, as well as an additional $50,000 to 10 other organizations for general community-serving project programs for a total of $250,000 in funding during this current fiscal year. If the program were to continue in September fiscal year, fiscal year '22, '23, it will be the fifth year of the program. As part of their funding agreement, each grant recipient has submitted a mid-year report to provide program updates at the halfway point of the funding cycle. And at the mid-year, the larger majority of the 17 funded organizations report that they are on track to meet their goals by the end of fiscal year, and the few organizations that have not yet completed at least 50% of the stated goals have detailed steps that they will take to ensure that they achieve their goals in time. And looking over the mid-year reports, we gleaned a couple of highlights, key learnings, and challenges. Highlights include the ability to continue and increase delivery capacity of essential services. An example we noted in this was from Coasthead Hope and their Critical Family Needs Safety Net Services Program, which in just the first half of this fiscal year provided services to 2,034 duplicated households. We've also liked to highlight new collaboration amongst organizations, notably from the Community Resilience Hub, which is a collaboration between the Career Education Foundation, ALAS, and the Boys and Girls Club of the Coast Side. They're working very collaboratively on this initiative. And part of that work has included applying for other grants and pulling all their resources together. One of the grants that they have received was a $50,000 grant from the Trend Zuckerberg Initiative, and I'm sure that they have several more coming down the line. For key learnings and challenges, the majority of the funded organizations noted that the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic have continued to provide challenges to organizational operations as well as clients' financial and mental and emotional well-being. These challenges include difficulties in providing certain services, increased need for food and financial assistance, and increased mental health issues as a result of ongoing hardships. Now, several, or probably most of you that with Coasthead Recovery Initiative is, which is a comprehensive economic development planning process that was initiated in 2021, I believe, to write a blueprint, sorry, to address the immediate recovery needs of the coast and to write a blueprint for a more sustainable and resilient future on the coast. And this effort culminated in a set of recommendations that, among other things, can inform CSFA funding priorities and grant administration while at the same time supporting CRI implementation. One of CRI's working groups, Team Thrive, analyzed challenges facing nonprofit organizations emerging from the pandemic and the potential role they play in driving economic recovery. Findings in the Coasthead Recovery Report reveal growing inequality and need, a lack of community connectedness, loss of revenue from canceled fundraisers, capacity issues, and challenges to reaching the hard-to-reach. Mental health issues and housing insecurity were an additional, or additional challenges that required immediate solutions that complement longer-range planning efforts. And given these realities, Team Thrive developed a set of recommendations, which include the two listed on the screen. The first one being to develop a more coordinated and integrated approach to providing safety net services for vulnerable individuals and families, and to increase and strengthen capacity of providers to connect vulnerable residents to rental, financial, and other public assistance benefits. These recommendations highlight the urgency of basic needs such as housing, shelter, food, clothing, and financial assistance, including connections to public benefit programs, and affirm what current CSFA grant recipients have identified as a key challenges and needs in their mid-year reports. Now, looking forward... Now, looking forward to upcoming fiscal year, for fiscal year 2022-23, the CSFA Subcommittee recommends continuation of the CSFA Grant Program at a funding amount of $300,000 with fewer but larger grant amounts of up to $50,000. And due to the continued impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and associated economic and mental health effects, and based on the findings from Team Thrive of the Coastside Recovery Initiative, staff recommends that the funding be made exclusively available to organizations and programs providing essential safety net services to the residents of Gaffin Bay. For the purposes of the CSFA Program, we identified safety net services to include services related to basic needs such as food, shelter, clothing, employment, and other public benefits assistance. Services related to housing and security, such as shared housing capacity, rent relief, and renters' rights assistance, and mental health and wellness services, such as individual and family counseling and case management. Eligibility requirements that have been identified. The one hard-line requirement is that applicants must provide essential safety net services. Applicants must also be formerly incorporated nonprofit entities either based in the city of Gaffin Bay or in the county of San Mateo and have to prove that they provide services to individuals who live or work in the city of Gaffin Bay. And top consideration will be given to applicants who demonstrate how program funding increases collaboration, coordination, and capacity building, among other nonprofits providing safety net services to organizations that incorporate culturally competent and language-accessible outreach services that combat misinformation and link the hard-to-reach with existing programs and resources, and to organizations that incorporate innovative approaches and best practices in the delivery of services. This is the proposal process that we have in mind for the application period and the deadline. But there's still TBD, depending on council approval tonight. But if the program were approved tonight, it's set up that we can roll it out pretty quickly, potentially opening up applications later this week and closing them in mid-May. Following the deadline for applications, city staff will give all the applications an initial review to ensure eligibility requirements and for completeness. Following that, the CSFA Subcommittee will need to review and form a recommendation to the full city council. And the council will review that recommendation and make final decisions on all grant funding. And once those final decisions have been made, staff will per funding agreements and distribute funding between July and August of 2022. And for fiscal year 2022-23, staff is also proposing a slight change in the reporting requirements. A new addition for this year would be that grant recipients would be expected to participate in cohorts, ideally one to two cohort convenings per grant cycle. And the purpose of these convenings is to encourage an integrated and collaborative approach among safety net service providers and to exchange best practices and discuss challenges in an open and supportive peer-learning environment. Grant recipients will also be required to submit the mid-year report as they currently are. The one big change is that they would not be required to submit an end-of-year report unless they are a new grant recipient that has not received CSFA funding in the past. Then they would be required to submit their IRS Form 990 to prove their nonprofit status. And they would also be required to provide an end-of-year financial statement. And before I close, I'd like to recognize our senior management analyst, Karen Decker, and our consultant, Erica Wood, for their work in leading the Coastside Recovery Initiative and for the help in developing the recommendations for this year's CSFA program. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or go back to any slides.
And Victor, I actually, I wanted to add one other piece to this.
Sure.
Thank you, council members. And thank you, Victor, for just incredible work that you've done on this program over the years and continue to do. And we know how important this is for the community. A couple of years ago, your council provided funding through our Affordable Housing Fund to a couple of nonprofits to provide emergency housing assistance. And that has been really important in those nonprofits serving our community members, especially those that are renting and dealing with struggles of the pandemic and increasing rent costs. And although that's not considered part of the CSFA Grant Program, staff does plan to include recommendations in the upcoming budget to add additional funding to nonprofits for that purpose as well. So we just want to make sure that you and the community understand that housing remains a really, really important need in the community and ties in really closely to the work that the nonprofits are doing under the grant program. But with a separate funding source, we will bring that recommendation separately in the budget.
Thank you, men, and thank you so much, Victor. Before seeing if there's public comment, are there questions from council members for staff? And Jessica, could you see if there are members in public who would like to address the issue?
I know hands raised so far. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised, ma'am.
Thank you, Jessica. Comments from council members? Councilmember Rarback?
I couldn't agree more with these recommendations. If you follow the evolution of the CFSA, we've given more money each year to more deserving organizations. And I think this emphasis on safety nets, larger but fewer grants, all makes sense to me, and I heartily endorse all of those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rarback. Anybody else? Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I don't remember during our subcommittee meeting deciding that we did not need a year-end financial report from all of the organizations that we have given money to. I think it's important that we have a year-end report.
Victor or Matt, could you address that?
Yeah, I'm happy to respond to that. And I think maybe there's a compromise here. The idea was, and this was especially, we have a really unique opportunity to glean feedback from Erica Wood, who has been working with us the last couple of years and has a very distinguished career working in nonprofits and philanthropy. And with Karen Decker, our senior management analyst, who had a career in nonprofit leadership and executive leadership before coming to the city, to really provide some really good feedback and input on the process. And the goal, I think, is to eliminate administrative tasks that are maybe unnecessary or less important so that the nonprofits can focus on service delivery. And that's, we had looked at replacing reporting with the cohorts. I think what you're probably looking for is just a financial accounting of the use of the funds. And so if that's correct, maybe we can adjust that, that year-end report for existing nonprofits that we've worked with before can be limited to just documenting how the money was spent and not a lot of narrative and additional details. And we would only ask additional details from new nonprofits. Would that meet your need?
I'd be very happy with that. Thank you.
I would like, as part of that exercise, knowing like, you know, like categories of expenditures, just so we can see, you know, how projects go together and get an idea, like, is it for labor? Is it for materials? You know, just big categories, nothing too detailed. We don't want to bean count, but it's helpful for our own education about, you know, how these things work, I think. And I think your point was well-taken about anybody who might be new. Certainly, you want to see their 1090, and certainly you want to see something that's more robust. If someone doesn't have a lot of experience or they're smaller, you want to make sure, you know, that they're engaging in best practices. So that made sense to me. Councilmember Brownstone?
You know, first, thank you, staff, for putting together and having so many different people working on this. Matthew, thank you for reminding us and everyone that we did have rental assistance that we took out of our housing fund. I definitely agree with revisiting that again. I think we have just too many people in our community and they've called up during public forums who are having to make the choice between food and rent. And it's pretty hard to have a healthy environment for families and children without a roof over your head and food. And so I think, I like the idea that we might have, you know, larger grants for those kind of programs this coming year. We have an amazing, what always comes to my mind is the food pantry that ALOS puts together in the community. And the reason I love it so much is it really gets to, you know, a health equity issue in terms of, they do an amazing job of providing healthy food that is also fits, you know, a lot of the community they serve culturally, their preferred diets, and it's healthy. And the other thing I like about the pantry is that so many people in our community volunteer. They come, they help pack the bags, they help distribute the food. People from, people come from across the hill to work at that pantry and put it together. So I feel that it's an opportunity for the community to contribute, help and volunteer. And again, as well as providing an important equity service. So yeah, I look forward to seeing some enhanced grants for both food and rent. So thanks, everybody, for helping us put that together and work on it. You're muted.
Councilmember Jimenez has recused. So I just want to say, I think it's a good plan. Thank you for everyone who helped with this development. Thank you, council, for being supportive. What I really like about this piece, in addition to the fact that we're, you know, recognizing the need and, you know, our stability and livability as a community depends on having robust social capital, you know, and social equity. You know, government can't do it all. We can't do it all as individuals. You know, we need our nonprofit sector, and we need to, you know, support our community members in their hour of need, and there are many right now. And I really like the cohort idea of having, you know, asking the applicants and the recipients of these grant funds to meet and collaborate and to help everybody see that there's a way to deliver services, you know, outside of their individual silos. You know, people need to be talking. We need some cohesion in how we, you know, address these issues. So I think that's a really important addition. And, you know, I think it's a good process and look forward to getting the solicitation, getting that money out there for those who need it. Thanks to everybody. So it's mainly receiving an update. Is there a possibility? Well, yeah, we can give direction tonight on the funding level. If everybody's in agreement with the staff recommendation, you know, we can make that a motion in a second.
I move that we contribute $300,000 to the CFSA program and adopt the recommendations that were presented tonight.
Second?
We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so moving on to commission and committee updates. Do we have them?
Just as a reminder, if anyone should either text Councilwoman Jimenez or if she's listening, they can turn his camera back on.
Yeah, I just texted him. Let's give him a minute.
There he is. He's there.
Councilmember Jimenez, are you there?
I see he's rejoined, but his video is off.
Hey, Mayor, I'd like to make one comment before we move on to various committee updates.
Sure, go for it.
Just a quick observation. I think this is the first time in a while where everything that we worked on, and it was a pretty full agenda, that we had unanimous votes on every item. And I'm just saying, it's a pleasure to see that. Because sometimes we don't. Sometimes we disagree. It's nice to have an evening where we agree on everything. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Brownstone, for acknowledging that. Yes, it's been a good meeting, I would say. And I'm not going to take any, you know, closing views. I will ask if there are any commission and committee updates.
I don't believe we have any tonight, Madam Mayor. Certainly none from Parks and Rec, and I don't think Jill has one from Planning Commission either.
How about city council reports?
I went to the MCC meeting last week, and I think Claire did a wonderful job of summarizing what happened, so I won't repeat that.
Thank you, Harvey, for continuing to be our liaison. It's a much-needed function. Yes, I haven't had much in the way of committee action since my last report out of our April 5th meeting, but there are meetings coming up. I did attend a very interesting webinar last week put on by the Office of Sustainability at the county and immensely clean energy, just updating everybody electrification, you know, who's doing it, what are the approaches? You know, people are putting together cost information, so that was good. There will be some new information by the time I think we start talking about our climate action. So that'll be good. If anybody, future agenda items. Oh, good, we can adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for your wonderful contributions. It was a great meeting.
Nice.
See you soon.
Good night.